Good evening.
Good evening.
And welcome all to our first meeting of the 25, 26 school year. And we are so excited once again to be educating the kids here in Granville County. But you pause for a moment of silence. Thank you. Our vision, each student will reach his or her full potential, prepared to thrive in a changing world. Our mission, we empower every student every day. Ms. Answe, please lead us in the pledge.
Yes, please stand for our pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Are there any corrections made or additions made to the agenda and the changes? If not, needs someone to approve the agenda as presented?
A motion.
A second. It was a motion by Board Member Hayes, second by Ms. Russell. I would feel a question, say aye?
Aye.
And oppose, ayes have it. Moving to the first item here on our agenda here, communication and community. Highlights for Master Lieutenant Dr. Winborn.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, everyone, board members, district team members, and all those in attendance and joining us virtually. I'd like to welcome everyone to our first ever regularly scheduled Tuesday night Board of Education meeting. I think we're very excited about this change in the schedule and hope it'll provide some added flexibility to participate with our partners, both at the county and municipal levels. It'll be a good upgrade, looking forward to it. So, here we are. As you said, Dr. Lindsay, summer vacation for our students is coming to an end. And all of those happy faces will be back in our classroom in just a few days. By all accounts, we are ready to receive them. I am very pleased to share that we have successfully completed the reorganization of our secondary schools this summer. All of the physical moves, the upgrades, the special projects, and beautification efforts were a huge success. Everything was on time and on budget. And in addition, all of our staffing and student reassignments were successfully completed, and we stand ready to begin yet another school year. I want to pause and give some special recognitions and appreciation to the following teams and people who worked especially hard this summer to make this happen. First of all, our maintenance department. You'll hear from Dr. Kern a little bit about the magnitude of their work this summer, but they were absolutely essential in pulling all of this off. Working alongside, very closely with them, was our technology department. So, a huge thanks to Mr. Connor and all of his team members. There was a lot of technology that had to be moved, inventory sorted, reassigned, and on, and on, and on. It was a big effort on their part. Our transportation department, of course, they had to redesign virtually all of our secondary bus routes, which impacted thousands of students, and get that information out, and that was done in a timely and very accurate manner. And I'm really appreciative of that. Our child nutrition department also had to make a lot of adjustments in their staffing and the orders and amounts of food and so forth. So, logistically, it was a lot of work for them as well. And then, on the human resources side of things, I want to thank Dr. Kern, Ms. McKnight, and her team for all of their work that really started almost nine months ago, 10 months ago, to make this happen so smoothly. Mr. Perry and his team, they worked tirelessly behind the scenes to make sure all of the curriculum materials, not just the textbooks, but all of the manipulatives, the products that are used in our classrooms were redistributed, and that all of our teachers have exactly what they need to start the year. So, I want to thank them. And then, of course, we've got our principals and those administrative teams at the following schools. And just think about this, Butlerston Elementary School, Butlerston Middle School, G.C. Holly Middle School, Granville Central High School, J.F. Webb High School, and South Granville High School, and of course, the team at the new Granville Central Middle School. And for many of these individuals, they spanned across several of these schools. So, they were wearing several different hats at the same time trying to coordinate all these efforts. So, you know, this school consolidation work, it definitely added another entire layer of complexity and effort to what's normally just a busy time anyway during the summer. So, I just want to thank them for their efforts and extend my appreciation to all that they did. It's really an amazing group of staff that we have here. Switching gears, I want to also take this opportunity to thank everyone for a very successful convocation yesterday. And board members, thank you so much for being in attendance and enjoying that with us. Dr. Lindsay, thank you for your remarks, they were wonderful. It was, it was great to see our whole family come together and celebrate the start of a new year. I also heard and saw some that the professional development sessions were very well attended, and they received very high marks for their quality, the relevance, and the engaging topics that they had going on. I think it was time well spent, and I heard from many people that it was very worthwhile, despite the fact that many of the teachers, they really wanted to get in their classrooms, but Mr. Perry and his team made those sessions well worth it. So, thank you to you, Mr. Perry, and all your team. Just a reminder to everyone who may be listening that our open houses are going to take place this week at our traditional schools. Our secondary schools will be held tomorrow afternoon and evening. And all of our elementary schools will be held on Thursday evening, afternoon and evening. And a reminder that tomorrow is the first day of school for Granville Early College. So, I'll be there to greet those students bright and early. Board members, I said yesterday at convocation, I am extremely proud of the work we've done over the past two years and the data that reflects our successes. And I am very optimistic about our prospects to continue that success for the 25, 26 school year. I want to thank each of you, board members, personally for your strong support and your involvement, your daily involvement in our schools. It's making a big difference. I look forward to a productive meeting tonight to start this year off right. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Winborn, for those remarks here. And I always say that when kids come to Granville County Schools, they are in good hands. My comments, though, as follows. Last school year, we talked about trying to have a fall festival for Granville County in support of the design body, board members here. We have some long discussions, discussion, we have decided to postpone that and that festival, have be a part of the hot sauce festival. So, we come in September, 12th, 13th. Please stop by our booth here and learn more about the great things we have to offer here in Granville County for our community and also our kids as well. So, we've been having a different manner, but we still be highlighting the great things we're doing here in Granville County. I did attend the leadership conference in Wilmington on June the 14th. You have before you some highlights from the library money here, how the money was sent to Granville County, how it was spent according to information I received from Mr. Denton, who was in charge of that in Raleigh. Also, at the meeting there, they talked about how we can, I guess, redesign and revisit our schools here, but here in Granville County, we have more schools than kids here, but I was good to hear that information. I did attend orientation here on July 22nd here for our new teachers. I attended a great meeting, liaison meeting with Dr. Winborn, leading with the county commissioners there. We talked about the budget here, and we are, now we seeing, I guess, the outcome of what we call zero budgeting. And also, close now schools here as well, what we call consolidation here. Those things are going to pay off big time right now, because right now, we are in good shape. Comes the money, fun bounce here, according to Vic, and we had that meeting there here. So, what we're doing is paying off. So, thank you once again, Dr. Winborn, for your team, keep vision and leadership. I did attend the AI meet also with the administration on their retreat, very informing, to learn about AI. I went to summer academy at Webb, and great information, Ms. Hunt here, all the great things that kids have learned over summer, that program there, they even did a testimonies, having what they enjoyed there, everything the teacher there as well. So, all those things we are doing, and small things making real dividends for our kids in Granville County. That way was outstanding, July 31st at South Granville, if things was graduated. We still making that, it's our goal, destination graduation. So, our kids are leaving Granville County, being career, ready here. We still trying to push that emphasis here in our county here and make sure when they leave here, they'll be very proud of being a part of our system. That concludes my comments. Ms. Waters, do you want to start?
Good evening, everyone. Katrina Waters here, District Four. Although it was summer months, we still had some eventful things. I was privileged to attend several. And we did have, as Board Member Chair Lindsay spoke of, the leadership retreat, which covered very interesting information concerning AI. And with that, I can honestly say that I think we all learned things, but we are all on the same page about a lot of things. So, when great minds connect, great things happen. That's what I'm looking for. I had the privilege to attend an ad hoc meeting because these ladies of brilliance on the school board are working towards developing professional development opportunities for us in order to help us to be better to serve Granville County Public Schools. With that, then there was summer graduation at South Granville. What a great treat it was to see that students had not given up, but they continued to work during the summer to gain that achievement. We had a nice session with our legal advisor here. Believe it or not, she taught us some things and renewed some information that we needed, which was extremely vital. And we participated in the school board work session, which was much needed. With all of the things that I participated in, I feel that it helped me to be more structured as I sit in this seat and work towards the betterment of the students here in Granville County Schools. Also, I would like to say this to those that are coming back to work. Thank you for teaching and believing our students will achieve as we enter a new year. And before I finish, Dr. Whitaker, could you stand up where you are, please? I want to commend you on your dedication towards everything you have done here in Granville County. You've played an important part in the strides of Granville County Public Schools. Your dedication and efforts shown by you would truly be missed. But don't ever forget us, for we are right here in the corner waiting to see you again. Thank you for being you.
So, as we embark on this new school year, I have to say, I've had some time to reflect. And having been on the board for the last four and a half years, I have to say, historically, this is probably one of the more involved board member groups that we've had, which makes me really proud, especially being that we're all women and just so on top of it. But I think that the biggest thing is, first of all, committee meetings that are always open to the public. We always have three members that are required to be on each meeting, but I can't help but notice that every time that we go to a committee meeting, it's at least a majority, if not more, every time, which is so inspiring, because it really just shows how committed we are to having all the information and being a part of all aspects of the board, not just the piece that you're assigned. The other thing is that the last few events that we've had going on in July, we had convocation, we had a leadership retreat, we had new teacher orientation, as well as summer graduation. And the majority of those, I would say, three out of the four, we had full board attendance, which was really wonderful. Aside from that, just on a personal note, like I have gone to a couple of board trainings over the summer, and some of y'all have heard me talk about this at the leadership retreat that we had. But one of the board trainings was about cyber threats and trends. And we had one of our FBI agents in Raleigh teach us about all of that. But one thing that I just want to bring up to the public, whoever's watching, please use multi-factor authentication or use a Google Authenticator app. Don't use your same login and passwords for multiple logins. Just anything you can to protect yourself and to protect your family. If you have a complaint about, and you think that you've, you've been scammed in some kind of way, you can go to ic3.gov. And then, the other thing that the FBI recommends is freezing credit for all family members. It's free in North Carolina, so that's something especially even for your children, spouses, elderly parents. Just really do that, because it just helps to protect and give that extra layer of protection for everyone. So, thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Vicki Baker with District Three. As we prepare to begin a brand-new school year, I want to take just a moment to speak to you, our families, our educators, our staff, and our entire community, not just as a school board member, but as someone who deeply cares about the success of every child in this district. The start of a new school year always brings a sense of hope, anticipation, and possibilities. It's a fresh beginning for students to learn, grow, and connect. For our educators and staff, it's another opportunity to do the life-changing work of shaping your minds and building confidence. And for parents and families, it's a season filled with dreams for the future and trust in our schools. But we would not be honest if we didn't also acknowledge the real challenges that lie ahead. We are navigating difficulty terrain, growing student needs, aging buildings, and in many cases, limited resources. Our educators are being asked to do more than ever before, and our students are coming to us with increasingly complex academic and emotional needs. Needs we must meet with both compassion and resolve. We also live in a time when public education is often caught in the crosshairs of broader social and political debates. As a board, we are committed to keeping our focus where it belongs, on the well-being, safety, and success of every student who walks through those doors. That is our mission, and we will not be distracted from it. But we cannot do it alone. This year, more than ever, we need unity. We need parents who are engaged, not just when there's a concern, but when there's a need for support. We need community members to uplift our schools, not tear them down. And we need to remind ourselves that while we may not always agree on every policy or every decision, we all want the same thing, schools that help our children succeed and grow into capable, compassionate adults. Let's choose partnership over division. Let's choose to support our educators, celebrate our students, and hold each other to a high standard of respect and collaboration. Let's tackle the challenges, not with fear, but with determination and faith in each other. To our students, we believe in you. To our teachers and staff, we thank you. And to our families, we are all in this together. Here's to a strong, successful, and hopeful new school year. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member, thank you for those outstanding, committed words here. We all with you together. Thanks so much for that. Board Member Anderson, I'm sorry, Russell?
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Madam Chair. Welcome back for our 25, 26 school year to our students and staff. And I'd also like to thank Dr. Whitaker for her service. I want to congratulate our staff, our administration, our maintenance, all those people that Dr. Winborn mentioned for a successful consolidation and convocation. People showed up and showed out. We had so much school spirit, and people seemed to be committed to following the board policies that we had set as far as off and away all day and no tech Tuesdays and Thursdays. And we know these challenges are not going to be easy, but I think I saw a level of commitment that I wanted to commend. It was so much excitement. And Dr. Kern, you did a great job organizing and cheering people on, and it was just fun to watch. And so, the enthusiasm is catching, because it showed to me that people really do care about education in Granville County. And I liked Mr. Perry's bag, the big academic goals. I thought that was great, because it's easy to remember. And I also attended the professional development committee, the legislative committee, the training that our attorney offered, the new teacher orientation, the leadership retreat, where we learned a lot about our cyber world and artificial intelligence. And the, the Family Fun Festival, which is not going to be community involvement. And then, it was such a thrill to see the students graduate. I love graduations, and I was just so impressed that the students showed up and the parents showed up, and that was another time for celebration. So, it seems like we're off to a really wonderful school year, and I'm looking forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing those comments, Board Member Russell. Board Member Anderson, please share.
Yes. Want to say hi to everyone, and I tell you, I am very, very much enthused by what has gone around the table thus far. And all I can say is, I'm with you on pretty much everything that you all have said. It is great to know that, you know, we are a team and we're focused on the same things, really. With regards to different activities for the month of July, everyone has pretty much said it, and just like Ms. LeBret said, that mostly all the board members, you know, are coming to the various committees and everything. Myself with the ad hoc committee that we had the session, and then the orientation of the new teachers, I went to that as well and just welcomed them aboard. The leadership retreat, that's another great thing. And then, fall festival planning, and then, of course, the graduation was great. It was really great there at South Granville School. But it's, we are looking forward to a great, we are already moving into a great 25, 26 season. I can see that right now, and I feel it, and we're moving there. And we're going to stay focused, and with the focus being on the students, that's the focus. When we move away from that, we should lose our focus. So, let's do that. We may have challenges, but it's not challenges that we cannot handle. So, thanks again. I look forward to a new 25, 26 school year and supporting our teachers. Believe me, our teachers, at the convocation, it was something else. It was great, just seeing how everyone's coming together, all the staff of the entire Granville County Public School System. It was great. And one of the last sessions that I did attend was the Board of Education and Board of Commissioners liaison session. And that was a great session, talking with the commissioners and, you know, laying out us focusing forward together for the school, the school coming year. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Ms. Answe, for sharing those comments. Board Member Hayes, please share.
Well, welcome back, everybody. I wanted to take a moment to acknowledge how far we've come as a board and as a school system. As Dr. Winborn highlighted, all of the consolidation efforts over the last couple of months. So, last year was not without its distractions, but we kept our eyes on what truly matters, improving the educational experience for our students and supporting those that serve them every day. We made a lot of tough decisions, and because of that, Granville County Schools is now running more efficiently and pushing more resources directly into our classrooms. One major shift that reflects this is how we're approaching screen use in our early grades. In kindergarten through second grade, we're going to step back from the longstanding one-to-one Chromebook model and put more emphasis on foundational skills, building reading with programs like Letters from the State, encouraging more handwriting, and returning to more print-based materials. What started as no tech, I think it was Tuesdays, was it Tuesdays or Thursdays? Tuesdays, from our superintendent, with support, has now grown into no tech Tuesdays and Thursdays across the district this full year, showing this board and the administration's shared commitment to restoring balance and supporting hands-on learning. For the first time in Granville County Schools' history, every single school campus in our district will have a full-time school resource officer this year. That's an enormous win for safety and a strong reflection of how seriously we take the responsibility to protect our students and staff. And I want to especially thank our county and municipal leaders for their support in that effort. In June, the board updated our wireless communication devices policy to reflect the growing concerns about cell phone use in schools. And I'm glad we're taking a proactive step and leading the way in our state to help create a healthier, more focused learning environment. Lastly, I want to acknowledge how this board and this administration continue to advocate for our students and families beyond Granville County lines. When the U.S. Department of Education froze more than $6 billion in federal K-12 education funds earlier this summer, I had the opportunity to join Commissioner May in a meeting with Congressman Brad Knott's office to advocate for their release. And I want to thank our board chair and our superintendent, who also reached out directly to our federal representatives. Thanks to advocacy efforts from local leaders like us across the country, those funds were fully restored on July 25th, protecting critical support for after-school programs, summer learning, and other students that our, other services our students rely on. There's still more work ahead, but these are important steps in the right direction. And I'm grateful to be a part of a board that continues to push for progress every day.
Thank you. Board Member Hayes, those outstanding words there. Y'all are great board to work with, I'm getting so excited, can't contain myself. I must do that here. We're going now to the next item on the agenda, 3.04, student, staff, and school highlight reel.
Yes, we do have a highlight reel. As you have heard from all of the board members tonight, while summer is a time of kind of rejuvenation, we are also busy in the summer. And so, Cory had some really great things that she put together for us for our highlight of what happened in Granville County Public Schools this summer.
Let's see it. Thanks for those highlights. All right, Dr. Winborn, please introduce our next guest here for us now, please.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, would you please approach the podium as I introduce you? We have with us this afternoon, Dr. Carl Johnson, a professor at the Gilling School of Global Public Health, who you saw recently give a presentation at our leadership retreat. And he has two colleagues with him, A.J. Equache. And Bex Orton. These are graduate students that have been working alongside Dr. Johnson over the past year and a half, year plus, researching the impact of our Board of Education's policy around our cell phone usage in our schools. of our Board of Education's policy around our cellphone usage in our schools. And I've invited them to come this evening and share for the first time publicly the results of their work. Uh so I am so appreciative um of the countless hours they put in to try to let data guide our work in this area. So Dr. Johnson, my friend Carl, I'll let you start things off.
Thank you, everyone. It's great to be here. We are excited to share these results. Um and we do have a limited time tonight and there's a lot of data that we have collected. So uh if you have questions, please let us know and we'll have a fuller report to send around as well. But on to over to Bex to start us off.
Great, thank you so much. Um like Dr. Wimborn said, I am Bex Orton. Um I've now transitioned from being a student to being post-grad, which is great. Um and AJ is a couple of years um uh ahead of me, so he's um also fully graduated, which is excellent. And we're um very, very happy to um be affiliated with this work and this project. It's been really meaningful to get to um evaluate the um phone restriction policy. So um as some of y'all have already mentioned in your opening remarks, um it is a a hot topic on lots of people's minds. So um you know, it's called the off-and-away policy, off-and-away all day. We sometimes kind of colloquially hear it. Um and it's uh policy forty-three eighteen is is the number. Um so like Carl said, we're gonna move um relatively quickly, but we are happy to um take any questions that you have afterwards. And um you'll have access to all of our expanded materials as well, if there's anything additionally that you want to reference. Um so to get us started off, um we had uh these guiding questions that we were um using to help guide our evaluation. So we were looking at the impact of the policy, how the policy was enforced, and then what do our kind of key stakeholder groups think of the policy? So parents, teachers, principals, and SROs. Um and then we can go to the next slide. Um these, we decided to use a mixed methods approach in our evaluation. So um because we had such uh uh rich questions and and this complex uh question to try to answer, the impact, what people thought, how was it enforced, we took this um three-part evaluation design. So um the following methods each kind of speak to some of these different questions. Um and it's beneficial because it allows us to um explore not only if a change occurred in student outcomes, um but also why and how. Um i- in allowing us to get some more insights through qualitative interviews and surveys as well as looking at the quantitative administrative data, which is um my assumption is that you're most likely uh familiar with like the test scores and disciplinary data, that kind of thing. Um so you'll see uh at the bottom um of each slide as we go, it'll be a little footer. It might be a little hard to see um in in small print, but it'll show what question um the different method is kind of speaking to to just help keep you um guided as we go through this. Um all right, we can go to the next slide. So first, we're gonna jump into our administrative data um description, um analysis and results. And you can go to the next slide for me. Thank you so much. Um so we are looking at uh the timeframe pre-policy, so twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three and earlier. And then post-enforcement of the policy, twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four and later. Um because the um uh academic uh test um results are not certified yet, um we're excluding the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five testing year, but that will be included in our later analysis. Um we used academic performance measures um as well as uh disciplinary incidents associated with the phone ban restriction. So we looked at both the total incidents that were occurring all across the district as well as any disciplinary incidents that were um directly marked as being a violation of the phone ban policy. And any incident that in the description that a staff member logged mentioned cell phones, we also looked at that as well. Um to be able to try to get a fuller picture. Um okay, and we can go to the next slide. Um for our academic performance data, um again, I'll I'll just go for this real quickly, but I am happy to answer any additional questions. Um we looked at end-of-grade tests um and then end-of-course tests at well, as well. Um for this presentation, we're excluding the end-of-course test results um because we're not using that twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five data. We want to make sure that we have enough data to actually show significant results. So um that will uh be available in um future analysis. Uh but for example, uh we just kind of had the snapshot of the test scores um from students in the district. Um so we didn't have the same exact test scores for every single student, um but we used uh what we had available. Okay, and we can go to the next slide. Um so this is just a little bit um to get you oriented to the type of analysis that we did on this particular um data set. So we looked at, do the average outcomes of interest, so that those disciplinary incidents and the academic test scores, do they change after the enforcement of the policy? Um the T-test that we use just simply answered the question, yes, there was a change, or no, there was not a change. It does not show us causation. That's what some of our later um work does. And that's again, part of the benefit of doing this like mixed methods approach. Um okay, so we can go on to the next slide. Um so for example, um we found uh in the uh following tests for the grades that are up here, a sta- statistically significant result um showing uh a change in the average scores. There were also um some test scores that showed no change. That is an important result. It is significant um in just the way that we would normally use that word, not a uh statistical significance. Um so there are also some um scores that we saw that had no change. Um and then just as a note for the numbers that you see on this slide, the scores, um we normalize them. So they're between a zero and a hundred scale instead of the scale that you would usually see if you're just looking at the raw scores, which are something between four hundred and six hundred, just so that it was a little bit easier hopefully to look at on on a slide and get a quick snapshot of this. Um so this is is where we're seeing um the, in looking pre-policy and post-policy, these are the grades and tests that did have a uh statistically significant change, um either increase or decrease pre and post-policy. Okay, and then we can go to the next slide. Um this is to orient you to um the next set of numbers that you're gonna see. Um this is just a a snapshot of a report um that shows the um kind of scale of change that you might expect to see um among average test and and math and reading scores, which you you all might be familiar with this. Um for myself coming in, not being an expert in the um uh EOG scores, I I needed this a little bit to help kind of understand the uh the framework of these scores. So um this is just to show that um i- it's anticipated to see a relatively small amount of change um in in these test scores. And then we can go ahead and go to the next slide. Um so what we did see in our analysis is that um amongst these tests that are highlighted on the slide, there was a statistically significant change in the test scores. So um the percentage change um in the scores is indicated on that slide. Um I've also noted if there's a change in the proficiency level. Um we did not find any results where there was a change in the proficiency level, um which is an an interesting result. But the um percentage change does show that um on average, the scores were increasing after the implementation of the policy. All right, and then we can move again to the next slide. And this shows that um same thing, just for the math scores. Okay, and then we're gonna move again quickly. I'm happy to take questions um at the end, so we'll move again to the next slide. And this is describing the disciplinary incidents. Um so before the implementation of the policy, about three percent um of disciplinary incidents were related to cell phones. Um post-policy, that uh number increases. Um that is a is expected since that policy was on the books. It would make sense that more violations would be um indicated after the implementation of the policy. And as the enforcement of the policy increased in strength. Um so this kind of confirms, I think, what we would um what we would assume um would be happening. And but that gives you a little bit um more of those kind of specific numbers. Okay, and then lastly, I am gonna move through this quickly um and do my best to to be as clear as possible. So yeah, next, go ahead to the next slide. So we also used a regression model. Um this is where um I think our analysis really differs from some of the reports that you would typically see. Um the uh what the state makes available in terms of end-of-grade and end-of-course testing. What we were able to look at was um the enforcement level of the policy and how principals and teachers understood the policy to be enforced in their individual school. So um we were able to build a model that looks at the interaction between the enforcement level at the school and the test outcomes, as well as the disciplinary incident outcomes. Um so for middle s- I I'm gonna focus in on just middle school um for for this example to kind of talk you through it. In reading and math, schools where the policy was implemented and actively enforced did show significant increases in their test scores. Um this did account for uh school fixed effects and use an interaction model um to be able to look at the combination of both the policy being in place and the enforcement level. Um which indicates uh that just the policy being in place alone is is not enough to increase the test scores. There also needs to be um an increase in the enforcement level. Um so we need to also see a high enforcement level with the uh policy being in place to see the resulting um raised averages of the test scores. Um for seventh result, uh for seventh grade, the results were more mixed. Um so there was uh neither, there wasn't a clear effect um shown by just the policy or just the enforcement level. Um that means that there could potentially be some more analysis to kind of figure out what's happening there. Um in math for seventh grade, the policy was associated with a small decline in scores. Um and then in eighth grade, um for reading, math, and science, the policy was consistently associated with a small decline in in scores. Um in contrast to grade six, where we saw that that was an increase. Um we heard from our qualitative uh research that we did that um students are uh able, or if if they have cell phones on them, it's relatively easy to use them to cheat and to get um quick answers for math and science problems. So um it is not entirely surprising that potentially some scores might um decrease after the um increased enforcement of the um phone ban policy. But we're, you know, we can't be totally definitive just based on this model, but it gives us somewhere to work with. And we'll fill in some more of those kind of gaps when we talk about our survey and our focus group um interviews as well. Um and then in disciplinary incidents, there's a strong association between higher enforcement level and an increase in disciplinary incidents. Again, this makes sense. It's kind of as we would expect that um with higher enforcement, we might see um more incidents being um noted and logged. Um once we include the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five data, I am, I have a question about potentially if the schools that had a higher enforcement level this past year might have fewer disciplinary incidents in the coming year as the policy is more integrated into the norm and the culture of the school. Um but that is something that we don't have the data on quite yet, but that's that's the direction that we're going. All right, and I'm gonna pass it over for the next part.
Uh good evening, everyone. Uh so moving on to the teacher and principal survey results. Um we collected over two-hundred-and-thirty survey responses from teachers and principals across the county in spring twenty-twenty-five. Um and from there, we ran tests on uh comparison of the average answers across all three school levels um to see if there are any meaningful differences in perceptions and outcomes pre and post-policy. Um from those tests, we did see that there were meaningful differences seen in all of the pre and post um perception questions, along with meaningful differences in phone use during class and classroom attendance. Um teacher responses to these perception questions also became more consistent after policy implementation, um suggesting that across all school levels, teachers are more aligned in how they view the policy's impact. Um and from there, we saw that group testing showed no meaningful differences uh between s- school levels, which is to say, while these outcomes were significant in and of themselves, we didn't see these outcomes skewing um heavily towards one school level or another. Um so what this slide here is showing you is um just the visualization of the variance in some of these perception questions. On the survey, we asked five questions surrounding if teachers felt that they were spending a disproportionate amount of time policing phone use in the classroom, um how they felt um students' attention and curiosity was impacted pre and post-policy, um if they were dealing with cheating and uh violations of privacy, and then also if their enjoyment in their role had decreased at all post, post-policy implementation. Um and so what you can see here is across all school levels, and especially for middle s- middle and high school, we saw a positive shift across all of these perception questions, indicating that teachers spent less time policing phone use in the class, uh dealing with cheating and also keeping students focused. Um while their perceptions around enjoyment did not change, indicating overall positive effects of the policy. Uh next slide, please. And then just to dive a little bit deeper into some of the perceived uh positive impacts of the policy, um we saw that the policy was consistently higher among middle school teachers and was spe- one was especially high across the domains of academic performance, um class disturbances, and teacher satisfaction. Next slide, please. In terms of sources of challenges that teachers were still dealing with, um we did see that inappropriate uh phone use uh during bathroom breaks and during class continues be, continued to be a challenge, uh especially among high school teachers. The next slide, please. And then just looking towards the future, um while elementary schools were largely content with the policy as designed, um we did see especially for middle and high school teachers, there was a wish for the policy to be more strictly enforced in future years. Okay, I will pass it off to Carl.
Um just as our last set of results, uh we can go to the next slide. We connected focus groups uh with middle and high school teachers, school resource officers and parents, um asking about the perception of the policy as well as its effects. You can go to the next slide. Um there was a lot of information we collected from these conversations, uh a lot of good quotations, some of which I'll share. Um I'll summarize into three kind of core themes. Um one, an overwhelming interest in the policy and a felt need to restrict access to wireless devices in some way, um given all the kind of common critiques we hear of, distraction, bullying, um uh cheating, et cetera. Um and yet, there are still opportunities for students to get around the policy even as designed, whether that's on their own um devices, bringing in, you know, second phones sometimes, um as well as opportunities to get around it even on school-issued devices uh such as Chromebooks. Um and kind of likewise, across all the different co- focus groups we conducted, folks were generally interested in uh increasing the restriction access or access uh to devices. Again, that was especially the case among high school teachers. Um and and these sort of focus groups were done back in the spring of of this year. Um so an interest in the policy, uh I felt need for it. And yet, um we received a lot of feedback on how the policy was being inconsistently enforced, classroom to classroom. Um obviously, this limits the efficacy of the policy as well as it creates confusion among students if they're expected to behave in one way in one classroom and a different way in the next. Um and there are often kind of unintended consequences of this. Um for instance, a student or a teacher allowing access to phones as a kind of reward at the end of class uh for good behavior. Um students get on their phone and they end up texting their friends in a different class that doesn't have that policy. And so it creates a kind of, you know, increased distraction and and it's kind of mixed messaging, right, across different classrooms. Um likewise, there is uh often consistent uh confusion over whether the policy was just limited to cell phones or whether it was more expansive to other wireless technologies. Um that was at least the perception of folks we spoke with. And then lastly, this overwhelming interest in engaging more with parents around this policy um among teachers. A lot of them saying that uh one source of distraction is parents texting or emailing or otherwise trying to get a hold of students throughout the day, uh whether for issues of genuine emergency um or just routine communication. Um and then likewise, a lot of parents expressing uh, you know, these devices as being both a kind of means of ensuring the safety of their children, both again in terms of extreme instances. Uh school shootings obviously often come up, but even minor instances uh or more minor instances of they feel like their school or their students being bullied, for instance, and they want to have some way to communicate with them throughout the day about um that safety. As well as just a general desire to stay in communication with their student um throughout the day. And again, that's about everything from urgent issues to logistical things that come up throughout the day. And so any implementation of this policy, I think, obviously has to um somehow address both the kind of safety uh concerns of parents as well as their need to be able to communicate in some way with their student um or at least uh address the kind of norm of that um desire. Next slide. And so I'll just share a couple of quotes um to emphasize these findings. So um from a student resource, our school resource officer uh sharing with us that ninety to ninety-five percent of the problems that they deal with, they feel like come from these devices. sharing with us that ninety to ninety-five percent of the problems that they deal with, they feel like come from these devices. Cell phones, social media. The second quote there from a high school teacher. You know, they have to monitor access during the whole class period, whether someone has access to their phone, whether they have it out. It becomes too much to monitor. Half my period is just becomes game of whack a mole. Another high school teacher shared with us that you're going to have some student or some teachers who just don't care about implementing the policy and then it makes it harder for everyone else who's trying to enforce it, again, creating this kind of confusion over how it's being enforced and what way both for the teachers and for the students. Next slide. A middle school teacher shared with us, again, even on school issued devices, i.e. Chromebooks. They can do things they're not supposed to, and here's an example of being on YouTube. A parent sharing with us, you know, this consistent desire they have to be able to get in touch with their kids at any point in time and recognizing, you know, just because the way the world is right now. So appreciating, obviously, this is a context that a number of parents are coming from. Another parent, again, addressing this concern of inconsistent enforcement. Everyone needs to follow the policy the same way. For some kids who see things in black and white, it's hard for them to understand why phone use is okay in one situation or in one classroom, but not in another. Go to the next slide. So just as a summary, next slide. We answered these big questions, what was the impact of the policy? How is it being enforced and what do different stakeholders have to say about it? Next slide. And just a few major takeaways. Some test scores did increase after the policy's enforcement, though the data we have, we can't confidently say this was causally linked to the policy being implemented, but we have some evidence to suggest it may be, or at least maybe associated with that. Stakeholders ranging from parents, teachers, school resource officers, support the policy and even support increased restriction. And yet inconsistent enforcement remains a critical challenge for the policy's implementation. So recommendations based on these data, maintaining some phone free or low technology spaces. Obviously, you guys have now implemented the tech free Tuesdays and Thursdays. Strengthening the enforcement and also with clearer guidance to improve the consistency of the policy's implementation. We recognize that, you know, the data we were looking at was from the first year or two of its implementation. And any policy, you know, takes some time to kind of become enculturated into the environment. And then offer resources for parents to learn about this policy, the importance of it, to engage with them. Teacher-parent relationships around it, parent-student relationships around it. Without that piece, you know, the policy is only so effective. So that's the data we have to present for tonight. Again, there's additional stuff that we're happy to share later, but that was the kind of condensed version and the main takeaway. So we're happy to answer questions you all may have about any of these findings.
I have one question, I may have heard you incorrectly. Did you say that middle school teachers have higher enforcement than high school teachers?
Yeah. So if you look at these, oh, sorry. Other way. Other way, yeah, sorry. Yeah, we have a main kind of, keep going up, please. Couple more, couple more, couple more, couple more, that's it. Down one. Almost there, down one. Nope, nope, up, up, other way, other way. Sorry, yeah, that one, that one. So these were the main domains we asked, you know, whether teachers perceived of a positive impact of the policy. You know, you see the domains, their academic performance, class disturbances, et cetera. And across all of these categories, you see, you know, at least a kind of five to ten, fifteen percent greater level among middle school compared to both elementary and high school. I mean, just to look at one of them, class disturbances. You know, eighty or seventy-nine percent of elementary school teachers perceived a positive effect. Whereas that number jumped up to eighty-nine percent among middle school teachers and was as low as seventy percent for high school teachers. You can kind of see that kind of trend across the majority of these domains.
And just to speak to the enforcement level, we have we have the enforcement levels as reported by the teachers and principals for the past previous two school years. We did not include that here, but I am happy, that's something that I can easily send and make available. Within, so between elementary, middle and high school, each of the enforcement levels varied by school. So I can't make kind of a broad generalization about which kind of school level had the highest overall enforcement, but I would be very happy to make that available and send you all a summary of that as well.
Thank you, I think that was an excellent presentation. My question is about the additional support and guidance that we would provide and resources for parents to teach their students responsible cellphone use.
I mean, I think as we can appreciate, this is something that all of us can probably improve upon. And I think one thing that was really clear is, you know, since cell phones have become, or smartphones in particular have become introduced, you know, in our society in the last ten or fifteen years. We have established various norms around, you know, how we perceive them as communication devices. It's generally the norm now that if someone texts you, you kind of text them right back, or at least you have the means to do so. There's a sense that you're always available, you're always accessible, right? And there's benefits to that certainly, and I think, you know, again, all of us, but including parents and their students, their children have become accustomed to that. And that for a long time until this policy was really enforced was just continued, I think, throughout the school day. If they had a question of their student, they would text them and their student would text them back. And so when you introduce a barrier, you know, this kind of policy in the way of that, that, you know, shifts that norm or that disrupts that kind of behavior. And so I think it's important to just acknowledge that at the very least. And the same thing is the case with safety. A lot of parents we spoke with emphasized, you know, they have a GPS tracking device, right? For their students to know where they are, and that's become a kind of a norm of safety. We want to know where our students are and therefore they need this device perhaps to know where they are. Or if they're concerned about some bullying happening, you know, we have a new kind of norm around, well, they're able to take a video of that even or text us immediately or share a picture. And so these are real kind of challenges, I think, you know, that we've become adjusted to in an age of of technology when we have access to these devices all the time. And so it's not to say that those concerns aren't valid. And I think it's, it's up to all of us, especially you all and staff, to think creatively about how do we address those same concerns for safety and communication in a different way when we have this policy enforced? And to say it's not a both end, you know, or it's not either or, rather, it is, it is a both end, right? But the school is a place that is at its heart trying to engage, you know, education.
I'm curious, approximately how many people did you guys have participate in the focus groups?
The middle school teachers, around twenty or so. High school teachers, around eight or so. Parents. About ten, and then SROs was ten-ish. Other question?
What can we replace it with, you know, when we take some away from students in the classroom and schools then? What can we replace that norm, make normalcy in our schools?
I think that's a good discussion, you know, and I think I obviously is to the extent that there can be a shared discussion with parents, teachers, students, there's obviously going to be more buy-in. You know, people want a desire to communicate throughout the day. They want a desire to connect with their friends, they want a desire to be able to talk to their parents perhaps. And so it's not as though those things have to be eliminated entirely. But you do have to think about new institutions, new practices, new habits that can satisfy that desire without what has largely happened, without that getting in the way of education. And that's, that's a, that's a challenge, but I think it's a challenge that, you know, from the focus group conversations, people are interested in engaging with. I don't think they were dismissive of this policy, they're just noting some of the kind of consequences of it. And that's totally fair.
Not sure how I want to put this in, how to articulate it exactly, but I guess one of my questions is that we generally know that humans are resistant to change. So whenever something like this that does impact your family life and kind of your normal routines. How long can that kind of like coming around to the change sort of, like, how long can we anticipate that that sort of event will, will take? And, I mean, so if you're saying stay the course. When could we potentially see a shift?
Three and a half months. I don't know, that's a great question.
I mean, I'm just curious, like, yeah, because I know that change was something that we discussed a lot in that leadership retreat as well with technology using AI and all that kind of stuff.
So this is definitely, is impacted, I think, by my, you know, some of my own kind of thoughts and opinions and also I think from public health theory and kind of social change theory as well that one of the motivators of change, of behavior change is the perceived severity of the issue. And this is something that has come up a lot in, in the kind of background work of this evaluation is that nationwide and in North Carolina and in our county as well. We are seeing that there are significant and very severe mental health and behavioral health crises occurring in youth. You know, as well as concerns about absenteeism and academic performance. And, and I think, you know, this, this also kind of loops back around to, to one of your questions about how, what parents might want or how to engage them. One thing that we heard in the parent focus group is, is just a little bit of this feeling of like, things are changing so fast and kind of not, you know, just not having a, like, good grounding or kind of a sense of like, what is normal phone usage? What is healthy phone usage? What are other parents doing? There was some really interesting cross talk that happened at the parent focus group where there was kind of this one side of the table where the parents were like, well, of course I let my kid have a cellphone. How else are they supposed to socialize? Other parents saying, I would never let my kid have a cellphone. You know, it's too dangerous, I don't want them on the, and the, and parents saying, but you're going to ostracize your kid, your kid's not going to have any friends. You can't do that to your child, how, how could you, how can you do that to them? So this, I think, one thing that I was kind of taking away from that was this idea that, you know, parents are really just feeling like things move really fast. None of us in this room will ever understand how a cellphone works as well as a fifteen-year-old. You know, like, there are always going to be leaps and bounds ahead of us. But just giving maybe a little more information from a trusted source, potentially from a school system for parents to be able to help figure out how to set realistic and appropriate boundaries on, on phone usage. Even just like, what time should I tell my kid to put their phone away? You know, there was, there was a lot of kind of debate in that. And then, and I think parents maybe kind of intuitively or also just from, from, you know, their own kind of knowledge of the world understand that, that there is a, a real crisis happening that is linked to cellphone usage, social media. But a little bit more, I think, yeah, just informed information and context for them could go a long way. And in understanding the severity of the issue and that a way to maybe help this is to try to avoid texting their student while in school to ask them, you know, hey, go get, did you turn that assignment in yet? I mean, a lot of, a lot of times parents are saying, I'm texting them because I got a notification that they didn't, they had a missing assignment and I told them to go talk to their teacher. Which is, you know, we can understand, we can have compassion for that and maybe there's a, maybe there's a behavior change in there that's possible too, with this, with some support.
And then just building off of that, just trying to think of kind of the lowest hanging fruit for something that you could do when we're talking about such a big change like this. In terms of how we communicate this, you know, we can look at parents have the option when, when their kids are still on their phone plans, you know, kind of limit the use on say TikTok or Instagram. To kind of set hour limits for these kind of things and kind of building that discussion around, hey, you know, let's try and move from maybe the six or so hours a day you're using this phone to let's try and move to four and then move to three and then kind of move down from there. And also silencing notifications during, during school hours. Phones are notoriously these attention grabbers, there's pings for all sorts of things, text messages, games that you're playing with friends, things like that. So, you know, just trying to incrementally move towards these little things, silencing notifications, lowering your screen time here and there. And I feel like, you know, building up from that will help with moving along some of these preferred outcomes.
Well, I did hear that we have some work to do because we're not consistent with the policy. It's like the rest code. It's okay, first period, but it's wrong in fourth period, you know, we got to be consistent, I think, you all to make sure everybody's on the same page, trying to force the rule. Not, we're always out here for cell phones. But I think the question still remains, what can we do to replace it with? Any more questions, comments on board?
Well, thank you, board members, those are some great questions and thoughtful comments. I just want to thank you, thanks AJ and Carl for your hard work. I know this was an endeavor that took many, many, many hours and a lot of commuting back and forth to Granville County. And just know how, how grateful and appreciative we are for your scientific approach and expertise and look forward to seeing this published and shared widely. I hope you guys get lots of interest for your hard work and Carl, just thank you for your continued partnership and dedication to our students, it's greatly appreciated. And just a deep personal thanks for each of you.
Thank you so much.
Looking right along to three point oh six, a resolution supporting balanced instruction. It's no, no text on Tuesdays and Thursdays. When the question comes about that, we'll have a vote.
So I actually I actually like to have it read onto the record. I think this resolution sets a really important precedent for the direction that we're moving with our school system. And says a lot about the agreement and collaboration between the board and the administration. And how we're, we're all kind of moving in the same direction and have the same vision for where our school system needs to go. And
You choose to read it?
Yeah, I think it should be read. Okay. A resolution supporting balanced instruction through reduced screen use and a return to foundational skills. Whereas the Granville County Board of Education is committed to ensuring that every student reaches his or her full potential by empowering every student every day through a high-quality education grounded in academic excellence, critical thinking and long-term knowledge retention. And whereas, research consistently shows that handwriting and reading from printed materials enhance comprehension, memory and cognitive engagement more effectively than reading or writing on digital devices. And whereas, non-digital instruction, instructional methods promote sustained focus, limit distractions commonly associated with screens and support the development of fine motor skills, executive functioning and personal responsibility through physical engagement and learning tasks. And whereas, excessive screen time has been linked to eye strain, shortened attention spans, sleep disruption and negative impacts on mental health, especially in children and adolescents. And whereas, many educators and families in Granville County have expressed a growing desire to reduce reliance on technology in the classroom and return to proven instructional practices that foster deeper learning. And whereas, in June twenty twenty-five, the Granville County Board of Education expanded its district-wide, often-away, all-day cellphone policy to include all students in grades kindergarten through twelve. Reinforcing the board's commitment to minimizing distractions, increasing instructional focus and reestablishing boundaries between academic time and personal screen use. And whereas, Granville County Public Schools is also implementing no-tech Tuesdays and Thursdays beginning in the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school year to create more space for focused, non-digital instruction and to support the development of foundational academic and cognitive skills. Now therefore, whereas while technology has a role in modern education, it must be used in balance with foundational, non-digital skills and hands-on learning. And in a school environment that supports focus, discipline and personal responsibility. Now therefore, be it resolved, that the Granville County Board of Education affirms its support for a balanced instructional approach that incorporates non-digital methods, particularly That incorporates non-digital methods, particularly particularly in the areas of reading comprehension, writing, note taking and assessments. Where such approaches are developmentally appropriate and instructionally effective. With particular emphasis on foundational skill development in kindergarten through second grade. And be it further resolved that Granville County Public Schools will prioritize the use of non-digital learning materials. Such as textbooks, workbooks and writing tools when appropriate and as resources allow. And will support educators with professional development on the effective use of traditional teaching methods. And be it further resolved that the board encourages the thoughtful and limited use of digital devices in classrooms. Reserving screen time for instructional activities that offer clear evidence based benefits to student learning.
I heard that Brad, Dr. Hayes, outstanding draft point that the Geller for us here. So we heard the resolution already for a vote. I need a vote in a second.
I move that we adopt this resolution as written.
Motion by Ms. Russell, second by Mrs. Baker to adopt the resolution as written. If a question asked, I. I oppose, I say. Thank you so very much. Thank you, Ms. Hayes, for that. Let's move on to the next item on the agenda. I have 3.07 for the comments.
There was one digital public comment submitted before the meeting and that's in your folders and there are no individuals signed up for public comments tonight.
We have moved right along to the consent items here. Or was your chance probably read these before the meeting here, 4.01. For the board meeting, 4.2, the special meeting with the play on the South Ground parking lot. 4.3, meeting discussed superintendent's evaluation. 4.4, non-digital tech.
I'm sorry, is that?
Okay, then we get back to the right agenda. 4.1. Have y'all read chance? I'm at read the one I want for the meeting. But the special meeting here, 4.1, 4.2. 4.4, board training and 4.4. Any question about those consent items here before we? Approve these items?
No, Chair, actually, I have a request about consent item 4.6, the Sunbelt staffing. And I should have realized this when we were adopting the agenda. I apologize. With the board's consent, could we pull that and address it separately?
Certified teachers about the.
The Sunbelt staffing contract. I just have a. An update for the board on that before they so I'd like to have a vote on that separately.
So I spooned that one there, guys. That's 4.6.
I move I move that we separate 4.06 and approve all other consent items as presented.
Yes, so the Sunbelt staffing and there may be other discussion, but the reason I wanted to ask for action on it separately is that. I understand there's some urgency in this to get someone in place with school starting. But there are some terms to the contract that are still to be negotiated with the vendor. And so I would request, not including the price, so the my concerns are not about the price provision, but about some of the other terms. And so my request would be that the board approve it subject to final negotiation of those terms by the board. The pricing would stay the same. It would be the non monetary terms that I would like to discuss with the vendor. But if there.
I mean, I was just curious, like, why one specific position? It's not about the person because I have no idea who that is.
Actually going to be four. It's only initially started. It is a different rate because they get no benefits from the district. It's a flat rate. For a licensed person with years of experience persons.
I assume is that the reason for outsourcing it is because we have vacancies that we've been on. And we will address that a little bit more during the HR update. Thank you.
Some more question about 4.6.
Did you ask for a motion?
Not yet. But it but you. I guess my request was that the motion be for approval subject to final negotiation of the term.
I move that we approve the Sunbelt. Proposal. Pending the on parts that the attorney has expressed that he needs to look over.
Motion by Board Member Ross, second by Mr. Brett, that we approve the Sunbelt contract. Due to until final negotiation from the board attorney. I don't think it's a I. I oppose. Okay. We're down now to 4.7, the budget review. I'm sorry, I see the field trip here, 4.8. That's when I have a chance to do that when each school should have someone to take care of the finance. Okay.
You're 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 at 5.01.
I'm sorry, go ahead, please, Mr. Perry.
Good evening, Board members. Tonight, I do want to provide with you just some academic updates and a little bit of a rehash from some information I shared during convocation, but also to give you information. Regarding our curriculum and instruction roadmap for the year. So you hear from various members of the team this evening, kind of talk about some of the things that happened that occurred during the summer. With our summer programs, we talked pretty heavily about those and share some results from our summer programs as well as our outlook for the future. So I'm going to call just a couple of folks up to kind of help me with the presentation this afternoon, this evening. They work really extensively with the program and I do want them to share their findings and the results of the. Summer learning program, our AIG camp, how well our students did with the high school courses who were there for credit recovery. We had two, something new this year with the ninth grade summer success academy. So we do want to share some information with about that program as well as the AIG camp and new teacher orientation. So ladies, take it away. We couldn't let Dr. Whittaker get away without presenting this evening. So this is her finale. This is her finale and we want to let her go out with a bang tonight.
Good evening, everyone. Just to share some updates about our summer programs, just to give you an idea of the impact our summer program had. On the screen, you will see the grade spans that we serve both element in elementary and middle school. We provided instruction in reading and math. And so you can just take a look and see here where our students were. We provided for you the number of students that were tested in each grade level and the percent of students that showed. Increase or gain. And so we base the number on the number of students who had both a pre and post assessment. And we looked at that and determined how much gain or growth the students made. Any questions? All right, thank you.
Our high school students had the opportunity to take courses. Some needed for promotion, some wanting to get ahead and then some needed for graduation. And so we had 75 courses that were taken by students. I did it by courses because some students actually completed more than one. And out of that 75, we had 70 students successfully complete their courses with a 93% rate. So we are very proud of our students. I will say that our lab managers, the lab facilitators at both sites. They were great and I just contribute the success rate to their. Partnership that they built with students in in the building.
Good evening, everyone. I just wanted to share an update on the AIG camp that we had this summer. It was the first time. That we have had one and we had 52 students attend and that was students in rising grades three through eight. We did share the sites with our traditional camps and so we had 31 attendees at the Mount Energy Site and 21 at Cradle. You can see that we had a few parent and guardian and student comments there. And we did do a parent and a student evaluation and we received a 4.91 out of five stars. And the only negative comment that we received was it wasn't long enough. So we are really. Looking ahead this year and preparing to to make this something that we do each year and then. Trying to expand it this summer as well. So I think it was extremely successful. The teachers had a great time. The students had an amazing time. And I think you saw all of the showcase in the video earlier and I just love that they were excited about coming back to school. And being a part of this authentic learning. So that was AIG camp. And then also many of you were with us just a few weeks ago at new teacher orientation and you were able to bring greetings to our teachers. We welcome 17 teachers to new new teacher orientation. Twelve of those were beginning teacher one, so they're just. Right out the gate coming to us for the first time. And then we actually had five that were beginning teacher BT twos that weren't able to attend the orientation last summer because they were hired late. And so we had three full days of important content. It was a very full agenda. We also had on our second day, we had several of our community partners here to speak with our beginning teachers, which was. A great opportunity and we've received a lot of positive feedback on that. Our focus areas for new teacher orientation was classroom management, focusing on standards and our curriculum and the pacing of our curriculum. And also you can see there that we had. Just a few quotes from some of the things that our teachers enjoyed during their three days with us for orientation. And just an update that came in that I didn't have when I prepared the slides is we did get pretty much of our evaluation filled out and so our overall. Experience, they rated a 4.5 out of 5 for their new teacher orientation. So I believe it was very successful and we're really excited to have. All of our new teachers here in Granville County and I thank you for your part that you played as well.
Ms. Bishop, if I may, just interrupt real quick. I also received personally a lot of unsolicited feedback about new teacher orientation and. I really enjoyed stopping by, but it just one thing I was struck with was the numbers. Can you talk a little bit about what was different this year compared to to previous new teacher orientations and maybe what that speaks to?
So obviously our numbers are a lot lower than they have been in the past. So we are retaining our teachers. Which is a great thing. Our total number this year, I know we do have a few vacancies and some recommendation coming in, but right now we only have 57. And several years ago when I took over, we were at like 104 on our roster. So. As we are exiting teachers from the program after year three, we are are keeping them in our district and so we don't have as many vacancies to fill. Which is a great thing for our students and our district.
And I think you being the first face they see when they come really makes a big difference. So thank you for all your work.
Well, thank you. My pleasure.
Good evening, everyone. So I will start out first with Summer Bridge. We welcomed over 200 kindergartners to our district. For a one week program. It was only for four days and just like Ms. Bishop said, that was one of our questions that came back in the survey is can it be longer? But of course, we had a fun time. We served over 120 students at our middle schools. We had the students had the opportunity to come in to get familiarized with the school, the administrators and teachers had the opportunity. To work with the students. There were lots of games. There was teaching. We wanted to make this a fun and learning experience. The schools even practiced their drills, the fire drills, safety drills, so that they could be prepared for when the students came to school. I also surveyed the parents, the students and the staff. So this parents surveys will go back to the. Schools so that the principals will be able to see what was said regarding the program. One of the key notes is I may put up comments about parent comment and a student comment. I also put up a picture. Pictures up there, but the one that I just want to point out the most is the locker. So at the middle school, this was a highlight for the students being able to learn how to use the locker. So I thought that was cute. So I just added that picture up there. So as you can see, they are excited from going from elementary school to middle school. So we look forward to what these students will be able to do this year as they are transitioning and we have our new students that are coming in in kindergarten. Next slide, please. So the next slide is our ninth grade summer success academy. This was a grant that we were awarded. It was done at JF Webb and South Granville. We had over 125 students to participate. It was a four week course opportunity. The staff that we had, I will say, was truly amazing at both sites. They took the time. They really made relationship with the students. They really helped the students to transition. To prepare them into ninth grade because as we know, it is a big experience coming from middle school to high school. The students were exposed to academics. We had a rigorous schedule that we kept. We also took them on weekly field trips. One field trip they went to was at Vance Granville. They were able to take a college tour. We also worked with the Durham Arts Council and had a robotics class come in for two days where the students were all learned. How to program a robot to get it to move. So as you can see, the little robots on the bottom. And we are also in partnership with the Boys and Girls Club, this grant. I just want to make sure I put that in there. And then the highlight of it all is that the students who worked the whole four week course, we had a summer success academy. Program where they were able to take and if they completed the program, they were able to earn one elective course credit. So they will already have one elective credit, which I have sent those to the high schools so that they can go ahead and get that uploaded into the system. And the student comment. As the student said, before I got to JF Webb, I was worried about the work and how big of a change this was going to be for me. Now I understand how high school is going to be. I learned communication skills and how to manage my time. The best part for me is that the teachers helped me to understand what my first year in high school is going to be like this year. So I'm very excited about the opportunity that we gave students. Also a part of this program, we had to have a required parent family night session. We had pretty much, we had great attendance from our parents. And I was able to get comments and feedback from the parents as we surveyed them as well. So we have two more years with this grant. So we are looking forward to seeing going through the surveys. The evaluation part to be able to see what we can do to enhance it and make it even better for next year. Thank you.
If I might interject again, Board members, just to let you know, Ms. Hunt did a fantastic job of putting that program together. In a very short amount of time. Mr. Perry, what was the turnaround time on that? I think we learned. Days, if not a week or two?
Days and week, maybe a week, but it was a short amount of time and we we got the notification pretty late and then we had to really turn it around. So I also want to give a shout out to Ms. Hunt for facilitating all of this and to our site coordinators, Ms. McNancy, Dr. Wareham, Ms. Rivera. Dr. Delaney with Spark and C helped out, but also to our building level principals and APs who helped support the program. And I got to give a shout out to maintenance, child nutrition, because this was very, like I said, this was very last minute. And they stepped in to help support the program with the parking lot project going on at South Granville. We still were able to get those students in and have and allowed them to have a great opportunity as ninth graders are going into that building. So thank you to everyone in the district who helped make those. These programs a success. Can't leave out our instructional coaches as well and all of our district staff members who helped these programs. So thank you.
And here are our book bus numbers. As usual, we did support our students over the summer. With book bus, we know that literacy is one of our main goals, improving literacy throughout the district. And we're excited that we were able to provide books. We touched over 1,000 students and it's broken down. By grade level and also by community sites. Are there any questions?
Yes, what was like last year compared to serve last year to this year?
I don't recall, but we can pull it up and send and and make sure that we send it to you. Okay, thank you.
I will say the book bus is out tonight, actually at National Night Out in Oxford. So. Those of you who have a little spare time, you want to go out there and check it out, get some free books and instructional materials. Right there at D and Hicks. So we're going to talk a little bit about our roadmap for 2526. So you heard me yesterday talk about secure the bag. Which is our big academic goal, but I will say that our academic goals really relatively have not changed. So we are still those three academic drivers of high student engagement, which will be key. When we have a tech free Tuesday and Thursday, and we're trying to reduce the amount of time that students spend on electronic devices. So. High student engagement engagement is going to be key for instruction this year. So, high student engagement is going to be key for instruction this year. Of course, our rigorous assessments and benchmarks using that data, particularly in our POCs with our teachers and our administrators utilizing strong professional learning communities in their buildings. But ultimately, we want to make sure that our grade level proficiency is at fifty percent or greater. We're beginning to see an increase to worse that mark. I believe that we continue to keep the momentum that we have and will continue to, we will meet that goal. Of course, we want our schools to have a grade level or C or better. Can't wait to see those results come out in the next week or so. I guess preliminary results will begin to see how our schools are stacked up across schools across the state. So, our next slide. Listed here is just some of our key indicators for our academic success or our key drivers. Again, in more detail regarding instruction, professional development for teachers and principals and, you know, student success. Tech-free for our students, reducing chronic absenteeism, which will be, is a big deal for us. If students are not in school, how are they getting quality instruction? So, we want to make sure they're in school, receiving quality instruction. And when they're with us, making sure they will behave. And if they're required additional services, we have the UNC gifts kicking off this year. Mrs. Rice will share more about that in, later in her presentation. Next slide. So, our big academic goal is literacy. Literacy, we use literacy, literacy is important in all of our subjects, not just in our core ELA classroom. We want to make sure that our students are reading real texts, they're writing in their classrooms so their opportunities to really think and talk. And most folks think that when you go into a classroom, it should be really quiet. No, we should not. You want to hear kids talking, having discussion and engaging with each other, solving problems, thinking creatively, having debate, having discussions. That is one of the, one of the key, when we go into classrooms, we actually ask kids, well, what are you talking about? What are you guys learning? We want them to hear, we want to hear what they're actually learning when they're in those classrooms with our teachers. Making sure that they can explain, argue, and reflect like writers do. Just as Mrs. Baker shared earlier, we may not always agree, but students need to be taught how to debate. So, it's important that these are, these are life skills that students need. So, we want to make sure that we focus on these three things, of course, not just in our ELA classes, but in all of our courses and subjects. So, our next slide, some of our big rocks for the year. So, we have established a CNI support team where members of our CNI team will support our schools. So, they've signed up and they'll be working, they'll work with all schools, but they have selected schools that just give a little additional TLC to, in a sense. So, they'll serve as like an ad hoc member of a school improvement team if requested by a principal. If they're have, they're doing some problem solving and need to run an idea by someone, they can go to their central office support, CNI support team members. And also, when we do our walkthrough, so we're doing our walkthroughs a little bit differently this year, our learning walks, where we actually are assigned to school as opposed to us going out in teams again as we've done, as we've done in the past. Whereas I have a couple of schools and each one of these ladies have schools as well, and other members of the team, we'll go in, build relationships with teachers. So, we're understanding, we've talked to teachers, we're understanding. So, we're not just, we're trying to alleviate this thought and feeling behind the walkthroughs that it's evaluative because it's really not. It's really a feedback gaming tool and we use that feedback to drive instruction. So, really excited about how we can really work with that support team. This year, we had our, when we had our leadership retreat, day two was the instructional retreat. So, we spent a lot of time talking to principals about EVOs, how to effectively use EVOs. And looking at that data, when, when the results starting to roll in from DPI, how do we use that to drive instruction? How do we make sure that our students are assigned to teachers who will help to reduce or close gaps? We talked about MTSS, interventions for elementary, middle, and high school students. Sometimes folk, there's a misconception between interventions and remediation. How do we use that time wisely? And of course, literacy. So, literacy instruction, instructional strategies were taught to our principals during that retreat. So, they had, they got a good taste of it before everyone else did on yesterday. Some of the pictures that Cory, in her presentation, if you saw that principals were lined up against the wall, those are some protocols that we taught our principals how to use. These are some of the same things that we teach our teachers, where our coaches teach them to use in our classroom to make them more engaged and get folks up and up out of their seats, talking, having a conversation and really to make the topic more relevant to the student. Redesigning our district-wide POCs. When Dr. Wimborn went around to schools and he did his what's the plan stand, we got a lot of feedback off about after-school meetings and things of that nature. How can we reduce that? And POCs at the district level was one of those things. So, we're trying to figure out a way how we can utilize our time in school more wisely. So, we'll, we'll come back and talk to you about how we, how that's going to look. We're still working with our principals per se on how to make that effective and more powerful and impactful for our teachers and staff. This year is our school improvement revision year. So, if you recall, if you were on the board two years ago, we did a little speed dating. So, we will do speed dating again, however, we'll give you more additional time. Austin did send an invite out today for two dates and we've already broken the schools up into seven for one day and seven the other. You have twenty minutes and we'll allow a little cushion in there to give you additional time. We'll provide you copies of the previous plans. So, you have an opportunity to look at those and we'll give you those in advance for the new ones as well because those are online in NC Star. So, but we have executive summaries that we can share with you. Lots of pages if you go online, so, but we will share those with you. If you'd like, like them printed, just certainly let myself know or remember the team. This year, we're also going through the ELA textbook adoption. So, currently, we are with, we've been with HMH for the last five to seven years and it's time for an update there. So, we've been kind of beginning that process. We actually will begin meeting with vendors in October. And we'll share that date if you're interested in coming to take a look at it and how that operates. We'll gather feedback with principals and teachers as well. So, they'll be included in the process because we want to hear their voice and be able to provide with you a recommendation for kicking off a contract at the start of the new calendar year. So, around January, February. As Dr. Wimborn mentioned, the text-free, tech-free handbook for teachers, which is a resource that was created. I want to give a big shout out to Dr. Mary Wareham because she led that effort in creating this handbook for teachers can use as a starting point. It's right now is in draft format where they can take a look at, well, how, what can I do on those days when I can't, well, when students can't use technology? Our students, our teachers can continue to use technology in their classrooms. But what are some ideas and some things to go back into a traditional way of teaching? So, note-taking, protocols that we've used where we can review and remediate students. So, that's going to be really interesting to see this year. We don't have all the answers, but we'll continue to work through to make sure that it's a smooth and seamless transition for our staff. And then finally, with the learning walks, as I mentioned earlier, we're just kind of changing the tool there. There, we revised some of the questions, but we're using a new tool called Classroom Mosaic, which is more teacher-friendly and principal or administrative-friendly. They can just go in with their palm, with their phones or iPads and go in and quickly do a three-minute walkthrough in a classroom and give immediate, immediate feedback to our teachers. Want to mention that today, we did receive, we were on a, Amy and I were on a call with testing updates and we'll be able to share some very positive information hopefully from NCDPI regarding changes regarding testing. It perked my ears up pretty heavily today and Amy's as well. So, I will share more information as soon as we receive it from the department. And I want to give away, if you have any questions about anything we've gone over thus far before switching over to testing and accountability and student services. Yes, ma'am?
Yes, not necessarily a question, but yes, by listening to you all, your academic side of the house, I like to give kudos to all of you in the staff, really.
Well, thank you. It's definitely a team effort. I definitely commend and thank the entire team for all the work that they, they put in. Some days, it's, ah, but we do it. We get it, we get it done and we're trying to, you know, just as I said on Monday, we're trying to secure the bag and making sure that we are in the right direction, aligned to our strategic plan and on the right pathway to make sure that our district is a world-class district in this state. And I think it is collectively, we have put forth the effort to make sure that is happening. So, thank you.
Especially the summer programs too that you have. You know, those kids have really benefited from what you all did over the summer with them and looking forward to the school year.
Certainly are.
Thanks. Thank you for working with our students.
On behalf of the team, we thank you all as well for your support. All right, so, next up, Amy, testing and accountability.
Just major updates for the upcoming year. Districts are scheduled to receive our science scores. That's why we, you know, we haven't received those yet. So, our principals and schools don't know exactly how well they've done. So, we hope that they will be here by August eleventh. And then again, our State Board of Education will approve the data on September the third and will no longer be embargoed. So, this webinar today, the Department of Accountability and Testing has shared that we will hopefully know by mid-August if, instead of is, if remediation and readministration can occur during the school year, which is how it was allowed this year, which I think is so much better for buildings and students that they don't feel punished having to come after the school year is over. It's just a second chance to take a test. And it counted for growth and proficiency this year and it's never counted for growth in the past. So, giddy about some of the things that they suggested today. I don't want to share them out there because, you know, teachers listen and watch until we know that it's official. But they're using some common sense thoughts about what's best for students, but also for schools as well. Security continues to be a statewide focus. We're using a different, it's still NC tests. They're just going to try to make it more secure. The best practice again continues to be that the teacher of record or the teacher who is exposed to that subject matter should be, not be assigned to administer that EOG or EOC test unless there's a proctor in the room. That was suggested last year. We enforced it and we'll do that again this year. It's best practice, but if it's best practice, we have the ability to do this and so, we're going to do that. And then even tighter on cell phones, smartwatches, wireless earbuds, which we hope will be cleaned up with our off and away all-day policy everywhere. But it, it's, it's now so strict that if we've been told if we find a, on someone's person, even if they're done with the test and we find that they had a wireless device on their person, then it's an automatic misadministration for that student, not the whole class, but for that student. So, I've already let our testing coordinators know that they need to be telling students that all year long. And so, they're, they're really getting tight on the accountability. Next slide? I think I'm next again. Here, our state required testing and local testing in Grahamville County Public Schools. That's on our website if you go under the CNI department and testing and accountability. So, if we make changes to any of these dates, you know, anyone can see those and parents can access this as well. These are all state-required tests, not at all grade levels, but it gives you an idea of these are the state-required tests. Next slide. The M class is a state-required assessment. I ready is a district-approved assessment that we give our students. The COGAT is a district-approved assessment that we give our students. That's what we use usually to start the screening process to identify students as academically gifted. And then the North Carolina check-ins, we have the option whether to give those or not, but it's our one opportunity for students to see what the actual test looks like. So, we do give the check-ins because we get good data back from that. Next slide. Attendance. I'm highlighting the good here to start. Wilton had the highest attendance for the whole year at ninety-three point nine. So, hurrah, I am sure she's watching. And so, the most improved school was Northern Grahamville Middle School that increased theirs by one point two percent. But as a district, we are down compared to twenty-three, twenty-four school year. That hurts my heart because we've done a lot of work and focused. And our principal said the other day, I feel like we have improved. And I think when they started talking about it, we've seen improvements on a chronic absenteeism. Those kids who are chronically absent, but whether it was weather, whether it was the days that we had remote learning for weather and if kids didn't turn in a packet, we marked. All of that adds up to your overall attendance. But they did feel like we have made improvements in the building. And once we get those numbers and compare, we'll share those as compared to the last two years. We will launch our UVC gifts. That's our school-based mental health option in all of our schools. We shared that with our student services staff yesterday. And then we'll be implementing a caring school community for our K eight classrooms. It is a non-internet-based program that our students don't have to access on a computer. It is teacher-led lessons that are about ten minutes. It's during that morning meeting time that they should have. What I liked about it is it matches the legislation that we are required to teach our students character education. And it is about having good character, taking responsibility, being kind, persevering. There are lessons on all of those things. So, we will be using that in our K eight classrooms. And that will help us in the MTSS process when we have students who are having trouble with behaving. That in that, it gives us some tier-two and tier-three interventions. So, if we ever needed to refer that student or thought there was something else going on, that we would have that documentation of the interventions we've also tried to meet that child's needs. Next slide? I might be done. Any questions?
Amy, I did get a chance to hear Pam Barbour speak about tennis at the Summer Academy. The whole section on they had, was to attend school as a ninth grader. So, there was a kudos after her as well here. I just have one concern, how are we going to identify or know if a child comes with a need? Hungry, homeless, poverty, I mean, those needs kind of stands where they're learning. How would the council, well, how are they going to kind of identify those type kids?
Well, we had training with our student services personnel yesterday. Teresa Hicks trains. It's really part of the McKinney Vento. It's just that overall looking for if there are students in need. Those classroom teachers are the primary folks who see something, know something. They get in touch with their student services support person, whether it's the social worker in the school or a school counselor. It sometimes triggers whether Teresa needs to reach out to see, is there a housing issue going on, you know? And, and then she just shares all of our internal resources we have for families, but also external resources that they may know of. I will say that that is probably one of the most overwhelming parts of this position when I stepped into it is there are so many people, agencies, folks who want to help. It is navigating the system and knowing, you know, where that help is. Who do I reach out to? From churches to agencies, you know? But our schools have excellent connections with those who are local and to get their needs. But those classroom teachers, knowing what to look for, you know, watching that student. And then a lot of our parents know how to privately speak up if they need some additional help.
There are no other questions? Thank you, board members. Feel free to contact any of us if you have questions regarding any of the information we presented. And I want to say, Dr. Whitaker, thank you for all your work the last couple of years. Reiterate the same thing that Mrs. Burton Waters mentioned. Really will miss you.
Mr. Perry, actually, Dr. Whitaker, since it is her last board meeting, I think maybe she should remain until after closed session in case there are any other questions?
Agreed.
We're going to mention this, Whitaker, Dr. Whitaker, sorry. Dr. Wimborn, I think you're up next for?
Yeah, Madam Chair, just wanted to just make sure, looking at the agenda when we went through the portion and skipped over the one that the attorney mentioned that we skipped over, Sun Belt Staffing. And did we then in turn, we took care of what four dot zero seven on the bank depository?
Yeah, I made a boo-boo there.
And, and also four point oh eight. I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, all of those were consent items here.
Yes.
Yes, when I, when I made the motion, I requested that we remove four point zero six. But when we voted, we voted on all of the consent items. So, that included four point zero seven and four point zero eight.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so where are we now? We are at?
Section six.
Section six.
Yes, and board members, Mrs. Hines is under the weather.
I'm sorry, graduation dates?
Under academic updates.
Just kidding.
Okay.
We'll bring those in September. We'll bring those in September. Yes.
Okay. Dr. Wimborn?
Yes, ma'am. Agenda fuzziness.
I'm sorry.
It's, it's because it's a Tuesday, maybe, right? Yes, we'll, we'll help each other stay on track, one way or another. So, as, so sure, Ms. Hines is under the weather and was unable to join us. And I recommended that she, she wanted to join virtually, but I, I made her rest. So, I'm gonna, her and I have gone through these items and I'm going to go through them one at a time. So, for item six point oh one, Mr. Connor, if you could, oh, you've got it up? Thank you. Board members, this is an annual event that you approve these fees. Vicki has worked very hard with the principals to get accurate information and make sure they all understand per policy that we keep these fees to a minimum and that they are consistent as much as possible across schools. So, happy to take any questions. Again, this is a routine annual approval.
Can I just make a motion again? That we approve all student fees as presented.
Yes. Okay. Motion made by Board Member Anderson, second by Board Member Baker to approve the fees as written. All the papers, all the papers are aye?
Aye.
In the post?
Well, thank you. Item six point oh two, facility rental fees. Similarly, your policy requires this be approved each school year. There have not been changes over the last ten years or so, but Ms. Hines is recommending that we do an update. And you can see the highlighted changes here. The yellow highlighted is the previous amounts and the red are the new ones. And these are increased in order to reflect the increased costs associated with these services. So we are trying to keep up with the cost so that it is not a negative impact on the school district. So that we're not subsidizing the rental.
So. Does that include if?
That is a separate lease agreement that we have with. These would be sort of one-off facility use agreements that we would have with, say, a church or an organization that wanted to use our facility.
These come a low, but I guess it's eighteen dollars, what?
Those are hourly rates, yes, ma'am.
All right, any questions? I need a motion.
I know we approve the fee, facility fees as written and recommend it.
Second. Motion made by Mrs. Anderson, Mrs. Russell, second by Mrs. Anderson to approve the fees as presented. Are there any questions, are aye?
Aye.
Opposed? As have it.
Thank you. Moving on to item six point oh three. This is a review, kind of a last look in the rearview mirror of the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Thank you, Mr. Connor. This is a very familiar sheet, I think you'll see. We are now a hundred percent of the way through last year. And you can see this was as of the thirtieth of June. And so I always look in that percentage to date column, which is the one, two, three, four, fifth column to the right. And we were a hundred percent of the way through the year and you can see that those numbers are less than a hundred percent, which is a good thing, right? That means we saved money. And that's part of the reason that we used so much less fund balance than we did, part of the reason. I would have to defer to Ms. Hines on these specific questions. We could direct to her to clarify though. This is an information item. And then there is another exhibit, if you could pull that up, if there's no questions about the. These are the budget amendments that were presented after the last work session that we had in June. And she had believed forwarded these by email per board request. These are the ones that I approved during that interim period. And kind of going through each of these, you can see that for the local fund, it was just a, some adjustments that did not result in an increase or decrease overall. It was just moving money from one item to another. For the state fund, it was a similar movement. No increase or decrease, just a change in the location of the budget. And then for the federal grants fund, there was actually an increase. Mr. Perry and Ms. Hunt talked about the ninth grade. Success Academy, thank you. That was the kind of late breaking news that we got that big grant and super excited to get that. So that was reflected here as well as another small federal allotment for EC. So I approve those as you authorized me to during that interim period and they're being brought to you just as an information. There are no questions. Move on to six point oh four. Ms. Hines has prepared kind of a look ahead to the twenty-five, twenty-six budget development. There's not a lot of new news to share here. She included this slide just as a reminder of kind of where we ended the year. If you all recall, we had budgeted to spend over four million dollars in fund balance last year. Thankfully, we did not spend anywhere near that. It's estimated, again, these are unaudited numbers, but this was estimated that we only used one point two million. And I think she covered all of that in really good detail before. But you can see our, what she is projecting for our available fund balance for twenty-five, twenty-six to be four point three million. And again, she just kind of put some of the reasons how we're able to save almost three million dollars there. And that's separate from our work around consolidation. Okay, that's important to kind of put in another category. That's just good fiscal management right there. Next slide. All right, so where we are for this year's budget, the state has still not approved it. The General Assembly has approved a mini-budget bill, but it's awaiting the governor's signature. I guess as of maybe today, I don't know that that's happened yet, but anyway. As far as I know, he hasn't signed it. But basically, we're going to be proceeding with kind of like the lowest common denominator from both sides of the, of the General Assembly, just being very conservative in what we're looking at. You can see some bullets there that Ms. Hines has included about what we can expect when and if it is signed into law. Again, there's just a lot of uncertainty. I have not been paying very, very, very close attention to this, so I don't know if the governor intends to sign it or what that'll mean. And then when they come back into session, what could happen? But it's, it's still a lot to be, a lot to be determined. Next slide. So kind of Vicki provided an overview of the process. Of course, we submitted our, our local budget proposal in March. We continue to work on our own budget. She has, she has developed an interim budget and notified all of our schools and departments about sort of, I guess, a, a safe estimate in what they can plan for moving forward. And again, we're just waiting from the final resolution to be developed based on what the state tells us. And once that balances out, she'll determine how much, if any, local fund balance will need to be applied. Again, just sort of in a holding pattern.
Dr. Winburne, I did just check and the governor said he will sign the mini-budget, which funds step increases, but no raises.
Thank you. All right, next slide, was that the last one? That's it?
Thank you, Dr. Whittaker.
Yep. And I hope Vicki feels better soon.
Okay, Dr. Curran.
Alrighty, we'll start with the operations update. We always have our busiest time of year in operations and HR during the summer. They definitely do not get any breaks during that time. So we are just really excited that the school year is starting because that means we can slow down a little bit. But I just wanted to kind of give everybody an overview of the consolidation that happened. We did have the four moves, Grahamville Central, Butlerston Middle, Holly Middle, and then Butlerston Elementary to the new Butlerston Elementary. And so there were many, many side projects that came along with that. Fencing projects happened at some of our elementary schools, like Butlerston Elementary. There was a lot of inventorying that occurred from technology to all of the classroom supplies. There was just a ton of inventory. And I think Bill Graham probably walked a thousand miles through our schools this summer doing just constant walkthroughs to make sure that everything was thought about, what, what needed to be moved, where it needed to be moved and how. We had no issues with contracts, which was really great. We were able to get contracted services both through our main mover and then through some secondary vendors who were able to help us with small projects, which is great. Our playgrounds are finished. There are playgrounds at Butlerston Elementary for students when they go to school next week. And so we're really excited that that is finished and looks great. Bill Graham was there today and he sent me a message, hey, the playground looks awesome, there's mulch and everything. And so that was really good. We have so much disposal that has happened in this process. I only have the official numbers from June. But in June, I want you to think about those big industrial sized dumpsters that can handle like a bus almost, they're so, so large. We dumped eighteen times from our schools, just five campuses. They dumped eighteen times. So there was a ton of cleanup that happened, a lot of surplus broken materials that had been shoved here and there because teachers are hoarders and they hoard stuff all the time. I was when I was a teacher, so that stuff was all gone as well. Eight of those emptyings came at South Grahamville High School. They really, really pared down a lot of what was there. Four of those were at Grahamville Central High School. So, and then Grahamville Central Middle School. I know there have been at least four others, but I can't give you the exact number for July because a lot of times they'll tell us that it's on the route. But then until it actually happens, we don't know if it was dumped or not. So the schools are definitely cleaning out and that's a good thing. We, we wanted them to do that, so that's been positive. Our cameras, our metal detectors, all those things have been moved and those projects have been completed. Our tech team back here has done an amazing job of inventorying everything and getting all the different screens moved. And then, of course, our rebranding is still in process, which you guys saw on Monday. That has been a little bit of a struggle for us this time, but we are pushing. Bill is pushing every day to get that done.
Dr. Curran, you're referencing mostly signage, correct?
Signage, yes, yes, yes. All of the social media branding, things like that, Corey took care of that really quickly. Was able to get all of those new ones up and running, so that was good. Next slide, please. So we do have some related continuing projects. Of course, the parking lot upgrade at South Grahamville is almost finished. Everything has been put down and they are painting it. I think they did half of the painting today and they're almost finished with that, so that's really exciting. It will be ready to go for kids on Monday for them to be able to park, so that's awesome. The weight room upgrade at South Grahamville, I promise y'all it's coming. We only got one bidder when we bid it out, so we had to put it out again. And that's why we hadn't come back to you yet with the contract. So that is out again and we're hoping that we'll be able to bring something to you in September to get moving on that. Furniture and equipment replacement has happened in at most of our schools right now. We have new chairs, new desks, new tables, new everything that you can think of going in, especially at our consolidated schools. Places like South Grahamville where they are now utilizing their science labs all the time, had to have all new stools. They had to have a lot more desks because they threw away all the ones that were broken. So we've been able to replace a lot of those new items for them. And let's see, if you want to go look at the new website and social media sites for Grahamville Central Middle School, they are there. I will say that has been one big project that our operations team has taken on this summer. Really, really, Mr. Connor and his team and Corey Hammett have done an amazing job with the website. It is not where everybody wants it yet, I understand. But Corey has literally worked on it every day since the beginning of May and has just tried really, really hard to get everything updated. Our staff directories are as updated as she could get them, she's having to build them by hand. There's not a way to just load them in there, which we did not know until July. So it has taken a little bit, but she's done a fantastic job. Mr. Connor has done a fantastic job, as has the rest of his team. So I can't say thanks enough to all of them. Next slide, please. And then we just keep going with the projects. So the guaranteed energy savings performance contract, we had the bid opening for that or the informational meeting for that this past week. We had one bidder, so we decided to go ahead and open it right back up. And so we put that out today so that all that information will go out for the bid process. We're working on that custodial services RFP, so hopefully that'll be going out in the next week or so and we can start that process. The solar panel installation is complete. And man, our maintenance team, there are seven of them and they have completed four hundred forty-one work orders. And that was just from June second to July thirty-first. They are working really hard. In additional, in addition to that, every day they have to restart our HVAC controls and that takes four labor hours for somebody to have to do that. So they are truly working all day, every single day this summer, sun up, sun down. It feels like they've had asbestos projects happening at both South Grahamville and Webb High School. And when they replaced the tiles, they basically did a full renovations of the classrooms as well, so they can go ahead and get that all done. There were two different projects at Mount Energy, two at West Oxford, seven at Webb, ten at South Grahamville, four at Northern Grahamville, two at Butlerston Elementary, and then all of the elementary school playgrounds in addition to the four hundred forty-one work orders. So they really are working really hard. And I just wanted to give a big, big shout out to Mr. Carroll, Mr. Blackwell and their entire team because they have worked like rock stars all summer long and it's been awesome.
Dr. Curran, if I may interrupt real quick.
Yes.
I don't mean to pause on that note, but I did want to back up a second when you referenced asbestos. Just for the record and those who may be listening, what we're referring to is non-friable floor tile. That's, and it's deemed, we do an inspection every year. Those floor tiles are deemed not harmless unless they become broken and become dust and get in the air. And every year what we're trying to do is abate that, get rid of it. And so we hire specialists to come in and remove those old floor tiles and replace them with non-asbestos. So just, just wanted to clear that up. Didn't want anyone listening to think we have asbestos problems in our schools.
No, we do not.
This is all standard process.
You may have noticed when you came in today, that sinkhole out front has also been repaired, so that was exciting. That just got finished today, so that was really great. I did want to highlight again the work our transportation department does over the summer too. They have made all new bus routes for all of our schools and getting the students at the consolidated schools with a heavy lift. And then all the transitions that happened over the summer, it's been really a heavy lift. And so I'm appreciative to Dr. Hamm and now Mr. Farrell and his team for everything they've done on the bus routes. Special shout out to Renee Gooch, she really is the mastermind behind all of it. So thank you to all of them. Again, technology team over here in the corner, they have just done an amazing job this summer getting all of the accounts straight, moving everybody from the schools that they were at to the new schools, getting all the new technology divvied out where it's supposed to be and moving all of our smart panels. That took quite a bit of time and Mr. Connor was literally there with them every single time they were moving anything. His team was there, so big kudos to them and thank you for all that they've done. And we are moving forward on the visitor safe, the volunteer safe and the student safe. Our volunteer link is going up on the website. Corey was not able to get it up before she left today, but she's going to get it up there tomorrow. Our visitor safe, they are in all but four schools right now, ready to go so that visitors can check in in this new sign-in system. And just a reminder for the visitor safe, every time somebody signs in, their name automatically gets checked against the sex offender registry. So if there's ever issue, it pops up immediately and notifications will go to the principal and the SRO too, if we need that. So we're really excited about that. And the volunteer safe has an easy background check process. I did my own personal one just to test it out. It took me two minutes to fill out the application, it was really simple. So I'm excited to have that start up. The system itself will be simple for our, our teachers and staff members to use. And they can track who's in the building, how long they're in the building, how many hours they volunteer. So if somebody needed those hours printed out for some reason, we have them for them. So it's really a night, a nice new system for us to have. And in student safe, I am sure Ms. Rice will be giving you more information on that because that's part of our behavioral system. It's not part necessarily of the technology side.
Anybody have any questions about those before I move on? Because our next slide is, I believe, questions, yes?
Thank you.
And I think I'm up next too, so. So our human resources, again, I don't have enough thanks that I can give to Latissa McKnight, Sarah Moss and Melissa Tally, who have spent countless hours this summer getting people in.
who have spent countless hours this summer getting people in. These numbers that I have on the screen are actually from Friday, so I updated them. We have filled a total of 83 positions as of today. We have two school nurses, which, by the way, gives us a full school nurse staff for the first time in four years. So that's very exciting. Amy Rice would be in here dancing a jig if she were still here, I'm sure. Five of our schools are fully staffed. Seven have zero core vacancies, and six have only one core vacancy. So I definitely count that as a win for the summer. And four of our schools have fewer than one certified vacancy period. So really, we're in a pretty good spot to start out right now. We did split our orientations this year. I know you saw that a little bit when Ms. Bishop spoke. But our beginning teacher orientation, which, again, we were excited, we have fewer than 20 beginning teachers, was separate from our onboarding of all of our other new hires. We didn't feel like they needed the same things. It was this big event. It took up so many days, and it just wasn't helpful for all of our staff members. So we split that out, and the HR team did two separate onboarding orientation sessions, and those were led by Ms. McKnight and included our finance department and any other department that needed to be involved. So that was a positive. We also had AD and head coach meetings this summer. We met with our ADs multiple times to get everybody, every school, middle school and high school, on the same page with policies and procedures, to review them, to make sure everybody knew what was going on, and to just ensure alignment across our schools. All of our head coaches that had been hired at that time came as well. And it was a great time for them to learn about our student insurance with the new policies and then just kind of get to know the district AD, Ms. McKnight, myself, and our goal to support them and help them with athletics in Granville County. And we have just been processing, processing, and processing all summer long. I did want to give kind of a cool shout out. This year is the second time we've been able to hire one of our former interns. I know you all saw that at the convocation, but we now have two former star interns who worked in the technology department in high school, who now work for us full-time. And again, I want to give a shout out to Mr. Connor for that program. He brought it to us, and he has made sure it is helpful and that the students are actually learning some real-world skills that they are obviously able to use to go into their career field. So we're very excited to have them and thankful for all that he's done. Next slide, please. So again, this is just an overview of our vacancies. To kind of give you a comparison, last year, we were at about 27 certified vacancies on August 1st, and we're at 23 now. Again, these numbers are from Friday, so they're a little bit lower. We only have 10 core vacancies now, four EC teachers, and zero speech-language pathologists at this point. I do want to also highlight that Mr. Connor is up there as a director of vacancy, even though he's sitting there, so just keep that in the back of your mind, that there's not really a vacancy. But we are advertising his position since he is going to retire and leave us in December. But again, not in a bad place to be at all. We feel like that is a pretty good spot for the beginning of the school year. We did decide for some of those EC positions to go with contractors. We have a difficulty filling some of our resource self-contained positions and our speech-language pathology positions. We've had one of those positions that's been open for almost two years. And so we felt the need to reach out. We had pulled every other string, is what I keep saying, on trying to find individuals for those positions. So Ms. Cotterman is still continuing to work with those contract companies to try to fill those other positions so that we don't have any vacancies on day one. There's only one school right now where the position is a self-contained classroom position. All the other ones are resourced, and so they can be served by other individuals in the building. So she's been very thoughtful as she's tried to fill those contract positions, too. And then our classified positions, we're actually down to three ECTA positions. But we are a little bit high this year on our classified positions, but it's really more child nutrition. We had a number of people retire or resign because of the CBL requirement this year than we have in the past. And so that's really where that number comes from. The rest of our numbers are actually very similar to last year this time. And our final slide. I just wanted to give everybody an update about ESS, our substitute system that we use. I met with our representative at the ESS earlier this week, and our overall substitute fill rate was approximately 98%. We never hit 98% when we were doing this in-house. It just didn't happen. Our total teacher absences last year were 8,860, and they filled 8,689 of those. So there were only 171 all year that left unfilled. And those numbers seem really high, but remember, that's every day. So if we had somebody on maternity leave, that one person counted for 12 weeks. So just kind of keep that in the back of your head. But they have been able to also increase our substitute pool. We now have three times as many subs available as we have daily sub needs. So they've really done a great job. Kylie is our local rep. She's done a great job of filling out that pool for us. And then the next slide is just questions.
I'm pleased to see things going in the right direction. Such good news tonight here. I'm excited that we are on the right track to rebuilding our system and making us real shine bright here in Granville County. So thank you all for your work, you then, Dr. Curran, your team. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Curran.
Okay, guys, we're for a break now. So any X, Y, and Z, the motion for an open session.
I move that we adjourn to closed session in accordance with general statute.
Motion made by Mr. Brett among Ms. Hayes. Aye.
Aye.
Okay, all the favors are aye. All the favors are aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Please don't have much. May break.
That was a slow reaction.
I need a motion, guys, for an open session, please.
I move that we go back into open session.
And a little by Mrs. Russell for open session. Second by Mrs. LeBret. All the favors are aye.
Aye.
Okay, ayes have it. All right. Dr. Winburn. We will get a few probably good letters from the months to give with some of our evaluation. Okay, so need to approve this certified classified personnel. As well, this 11th, 12th.
And for the minute, Ms. Russell will not be voting on personnel. Motion to approve the certified and classified personnel as presented.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Hayes, second by Ms. Baker. Then we approve the certified classified personnel for as presented. Aye.
Aye.
I oppose. Ayes have it. Okay, dates are remember, guys. Of course, the 11th is the first day of school. Then the AHA committee will meet on 11/11. I should move back there, Dr. LeBret. August 12th, of course, the HR, the 13th, Operation Committee. August 20th, it's Finance. If there are any questions about, before I begin the meeting.
I have a question.
Yeah.
From the parent.
Oh, I have comments. From the public.
So will AHA, AHA. I don't know.
So it's my understanding that this important is already talked.
And my question of time is off. If not, I need a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
More than second, that's a lot of people, but now you have a safe drive.
Yes, yes.